I want to welcome you all to our regular Board of Education meeting. Our first meeting for our new school year. Today is Monday, September 17, 2018. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students
while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Thank you. I would like to, well, this is nice, can you see if it'll unfreeze? But I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of first one of our students who just recently passed, Elizabeth Gonzalez, former staff member Nancy Van de Wurk, and former Board of Education member G. James Keller. If you'll join me in a moment of silence and reflection. Thank you.
Next, you'll have any announcements from board members? Do you have any? I just, I'll have a couple. As you know, opening day was successful, and it really launched us off into a really inspiring school year, so thank you for that. And also, I attended our football game when we played Melbourne and Wasps, so just very proud of our football team. And I think, I think that was it?
We have one of our student liaisons here.
Yes.
From the high school unit. He and I actually worked together at Lifetime with this. If he is, if one of the representatives of our students, we, the future is very, very bright. We've got great students throughout the district, at the high school in particular, and it's worth talking to him because we could all learn.
Welcome, welcome, yeah. The announcement of the Hall of Fame?
Yes, we would, we'd like to welcome Principal Doherty up to the podium to announce our 2018 Hall of Fame inductees. And we have a picture there of last year's inductees, so very excited, Mr. Doherty, for the unveiling this evening.
I am very excited as well. This is my privilege. I've done this several times, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it really is a great privilege. And I would say that the tradition of excellence that's evident in these alum and in our students who are presently in the high school is really an awesome thing. So, it's my pleasure to announce the next four distinguished White Plains High School graduates who have been chosen for induction into the White Plains High School Hall of Fame. The four graduates who will be inducted into the Hall of Fame this fall will join 78 other distinguished graduates ranging from the class of 1921 to the class of 1984 who have been inducted previously. Each has been selected by a committee of school and community representatives who review all nominations each year. Here now, in the order in which they graduated from White Plains High School, are the 2018 inductees. Frank Bruni, class of 1953. Mr. Bruni arrived in White Plains as a young boy from Italy, one of the many immigrants who built this country. Among many community activities, Mr. Bruni was vice president, vice chairman of the White Plains Hospital, chairman of the White Plains YMCA, and served on the White Plains Board of Education. Stephen Baruch, class of 1956. Among his accomplishments, Mr. Baruch was valedictorian of the class of 1956. After building a successful real estate business, he launched a 30-year career as a theater producer. He has produced more than 90 shows all over the world, including the original productions of Driving Miss Daisy, Angels in America, The Producers, and Hairspray, and he has won six Tony Awards. Lena Anderson, class of 1965. Ms. Anderson has been president of the White Plains Green Bird branch of the NAACP for a decade. She has re-energized the group, broadening its participation in national and local activities for jobs, fair housing, and affordable health care, and pursuing the NAACP's game changer agenda to effect change. Ms. Anderson recently retired from the Woodlands High School after a 30-year career where she served as transition coordinator and special education learning disabilities specialist. Richard Schlesinger, class of 1972. Mr. Schlesinger, an award-winning journalist, is a correspondent for 48 Hours and contributor to CBS Sunday Morning News. Over his 40-year career, he has covered numerous high-profile events, conducted interviews with kings and killers, and led long-term investigations. His work has been widely recognized, and he has won 10 Emmy Awards. This distinguished group of alumni will be in school once again and be inducted into the White Plains Hall of Fame in a ceremony on Thursday, October 25, in the high school media center at 3:00 p.m. Since its inception in 1996, Hall of Fame Day has become one of the highlights of the school year, and I certainly hope to see all of you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, do we have any communication?
No.
Next, we'll move on to public participation. The Board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum of 25 total minutes. Do we have any public participation tonight? Sure, please step up.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christina Brown. I just came to the first superintendent's Board meeting to introduce myself to you, Dr. Rick, and the members of the Board. I'm the new school resource officer at White Plains High School. I'm born and raised here in the city of White Plains. I graduated from White Plains High School in 2005. I've been with the city of White Plains Police Department for nine years and been newly appointed as the new SRO, so I just wanted to say it's a pleasure to be working with you guys, and I just want to introduce myself, so, thank you.
Welcome.
I would just like to say again, welcome, SRO Brown. You know, I have to tell you, when Christina was first assigned, she immediately came over, and we had a great conversation, and I think we've probably spoken every day since, all in a good way, even on the weekends. And it's really wonderful to have, to have you back with us again in this capacity.
So next, we're going to...
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we do have, we have a number of items this evening on the superintense report. The first, I'd like to recognize Dr. Vikaro Taischen and the Business Department for the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence for fiscal year June 30, 2017, and Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2017 Fiscal Year and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the CAFR. Once again, for, I don't know, the umpteenth year in a row.
Thirty.
Thirty. The Business Department has done a tremendous job in terms of our fiscal accountability and our fiduciary responsibility, and with support from the Board of Education, we're recognized again, so congratulations, Dr. Vikaro Taischen. Thank you very much.
I don't know if we'll have enough room for all those awards upstairs. Congratulations, yeah.
They're gonna start creeping down the stairs.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a great achievement that we continually meet the standards, the high standards of fiscal reporting. Congratulations.
So, we, as you mentioned, President Eller, we really did. We had a fantastic opening, and, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, that the opening of school happens with the help of so many people. And, you know, it's funny, because when you work in a school district for 12 months out of the year, oftentimes you'll meet people and go, "Well, what do you do in the summer?" Right? The reality is, so much happens in the summer. And I just want to thank all of, all the administrators, all the support staff, all of our operations and maintenance folks. The, the work that happens during the course of the summer is tremendous, and it really is only eight weeks. So, you know, with the amount that they're able to get done, it really is just great. So, again, my, my thanks and appreciation there. Before we move into my formal report, I do want to, to give the floor to Jackson for a moment. I know he has an update for the, the eight days that we've been back in, back in the building. Thanks, Jackson. Sure?
All right, so my name is Jackson Reynolds.
You can go right over to the podium.
Yeah, you can go around.
All right, so my name is Jackson Reynolds. I am a senior at White Plains High School. I've been in the district for four years. Let's see, so I'm now the student rep to the Board of Education along with my, I guess, peer, Pilar Sarone. And, let's see, well, I'm just looking forward to a good year. I want to provide a good source of feedback and just represent the kind of unspoken voice of students in the district here. And as far as the first eight, eight days of school are concerned, they went pretty well, and I'm hoping for the rest to go just as well.
Thank you, Jackson. Again, it is great to, to have a regular student liaison here with us. It's been something that we had, we had talked about for a while, so, Jackson, thanks again for, for taking the time out this evening. And don't feel like you have to stay for the entire meeting either. I know you have homework to do. All right, all right.
Little thing called homework.
So, it, it really is great to, it really is great to have all of our children back. You know, the, the first day is always a very exciting day, and we had all kinds of excitement, everything from the rollout of five new electric buses, just to our PTA, and again, a huge thank you to the PTA. PTA welcomed back breakfasts and lunches, and then barbecues, just a tremendous amount of opportunity for our students and our faculty and staff members to be together, to celebrate together at the outset of another great academic year. We, we also are going to be talking a little bit this evening about facilities and operations as well as security, and I would like to welcome, Mr. Frank Stefanelli is here with us, and Mr. Stefanelli has 27 slides here, but he assures me that he's not going to be going through all of them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I wanted to bring up first is Sean Lewis, who is our security liaison with Al Terrace Group, and he's going to be talking about some of our security projects and improvements.
Well, first, I'd like to say that I am also glad that the first eight days of school went really well. It's always good, right? As I look around the room, I can see plenty of people that I've worked with just for the last few months over the summer. A lot of projects have been getting done, and it's, it's a testament to the district. There's so many people here that put security first, and it's really important, and I can see it already that it's, it's been a great experience. I'm just gonna go down the list. It's probably the best way, because there was a lot done over the summer. Schools, updated emergency plans. We have to meet with all the principals, vice principals. It's not easy going through the plans to get them through to state ed, and I'm sure you all know what it's like to deal with State Education Department. To try and get things up there to them is no easy task. So, we were very close. We had a couple of breakthroughs this week. Looks like we're gonna get everything done well in advance. It has to be up there by October 15, and we'll have no problem getting that done. We started working with the police department and the other schools on getting a drill schedule together. We have to do four lockdowns and eight emergency evacuation, and that includes fire as well, and that's all in the drill schedule. The dates are set, which, think about it, you know, we're already planning drill dates for February and March, and that's important. We started doing some training with security, the SRO. Officer Brown attended the training, it was good. We went over lockdowns, lockouts, different security issues, event security and things that we could do. keypad exterior doors, that was something that you'll notice when you go around to different schools, you'll see a different sort of swipe into the building. That, it's a pad, keypad, that allows the police department to be able to get in in an emergency, and we've, we've shared those numbers and the things that we need to do with them. That should be good. Classroom identification and exterior windows, that might be something else that you'll notice when you drive around. You see these big numbers up in the windows. That's important, because if somebody was to dial 911 for many of our schools, potentially it could show what room they're in at the time if they use the phone that's in the room. So that, the police will be able to drive up, and as they're coming up, they'll be able to see what room the person's in. And you know how big our schools are, and that is very important. Emergency plan and evacuations, these are things that have just been, it's basically that plan when you, when you go to a hotel and you look up on the wall and it tells you how to get out in an emergency. It's that kind of thing we're putting in all the classrooms. Certainly Frank's been working on a lot of this stuff for a long time, and he needs a good round of applause for that. Security cameras, we, there's a bunch, all going into the different schools that are listed there. And then finally, visitor management, something that's on its way here. We hope to have it in place come January. People say, "Well, why do we need visitor management?" Well, the first thing you need to know is who's in your school and why they're there. There's certain people that shouldn't be coming to our schools. Visitor management is gonna help keep those kinds of people out. People who that have either orders of protection against them, they could possibly be a sex offender. These are things that, that can be checked in advance through the visitor management system. And I could tell you that a lot of schools that have visitor management, they say, "You know what? It's a great system to have a place. People don't come to your schools unless they really have to, because they don't want to have to deal with it." So it has its own little hidden way of cutting down on everybody that's coming. But things, things are in the works, things are going well, and I hope things continue great.
So something that occurred to me in terms of actually voting and using the schools for voting, and, you know, there were articles in the newspaper about Governor Cuomo allowing people on parole to be voting, and concerned about sex offenders coming into the buildings, and rules having to do with after 7:00 p.m. But I was wondering, do we have, are there any kind of rules or background checks on people who are working the polls that come in during the day? And it's...
I don't want to say yes, but I'm pretty sure...
Well, I'll tell you no, because my husband worked the polls, and he did not have, I mean, he has nothing to hide, to be really clear, but it seems to me that that's actually a gap.
Well, I can say, I think I might have met your husband, actually, because he did say that his, his wife was on the board, so I probably didn't meet his husband.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because I felt concerned as well.
He told me he met somebody who was really good and asked him questions, and I wasn't sure if it was you or not, so yes, okay.
I can just say quickly, unfortunately, we use our schools to allow people to come in to vote. I mean, I'm glad we got to vote, but we just, we're so safety concerned all year long, and then on that day, we put up a couple of signs with a few arrows, and it go down and vote, and next thing you know, we have somebody walking around the cafeteria because they need to use a bathroom. It's just not right. That's, we, we're gonna work on that. I'm glad on Election Day, it's gonna be Superintendent's Conference Day, so we don't need to worry about it that day, which is a good thing. But we are definitely working on that.
I have one more question as well. Does our visitor management system also include avoiding ICE coming into our building?
It does not. And that's something, I mean, there's things you can put in there and work with what you need to put in, in the system, but it does not.
So, just as a, as an aside, we've been, we have been for years now, actually, arguing against using public schools as polling places. It's a real challenge, you know, because they are the public's buildings, but at the same time, we believe that there, there needs to be a continued conversation on alternate places, alternate venues for, for elections. You know, our children are our most valued possession, and I think, you know, if we can, if we can reduce risk, we should be doing that any way we can.
Yes, and we've had some conversations with them, excuse me, but we have had some conversations with them, and a couple areas where we tried to move them to a different location, they, they kicked back, because either ADA compliance, there's a lot of things that goes about, and they don't have other places to go.
There, there is a process to answer Cheryl. The only inspectors we use are inspectors who are authorized by Westchester County. They have to be trained on the voting machines, and in order to be trained on the voting machines, you have to fill out a form for the county. I am not sure what the questions are on that form.
Right, but it's not, I, I've done it myself. It's not a background check, so it's not...
No, it's not a background check, but there may be some questions now because of security, and I can find out about that. Thank you.
So, I'm gonna talk about a couple of things. You know, this summer, we were hoping to do quite a few roofs, but it ended up, we ended up doing the high school roof, but our other roofs in Church Street, GW, MAS, Rochambeau, we did get the permits. It was way too late for us to go out, but we are putting them out to bid now. We're trying, we're gonna put them out to bid now, and hopefully next summer that we're gonna be doing some of those projects. The next thing is that the PA system for the high schools going out for bid, and we're gonna be putting that out shortly, and that's gonna go on at night and on weekends, and that hopefully be finished in April. And then the last one is the PA systems for the other schools, Church Street, Ridgeway, GW, and Rochambeau. They are out at the state. We're waiting for final approval, and then we'll be moving forward with that. So what we did was the high school roof, we had our challenges. It was 20 days. For some reason, slides are moving now.
Uh, yeah, I'm moving.
Okay, okay, he's moved me forward. Okay, that means I end this.
I got you covered, Mr. Stefanelli.
So, we lost 21 days because of weather, and hopefully we're on track. Most of the roofs have been covered, so now we're just, we're just repairing.
The big, the big thing with the roofs this year was the state changed the actual energy code. So, our roofs originally had two inches of insulation. The minimum is now is six to eight inches of insulation on the roof. So that changed the whole profile of the roof, so we had to raise all the equipment on the roof, 12 to 15 inches, just in order to do that. And that's what you'll see on a couple of these slides. If you could see right there, that's the parapet, and that, that plywood that's up against the wall, that's how much we raised the roofs on that whole entire school, just in order to put a new roof on. And those are the curbs. What you see in black are the curbs for the skylights that are actually gonna go on to the high school gyms. There's somewhere around 30 or 40 skylights that go into each of the gyms. So, our biggest next project was Highlands', and people ask me air conditioning, you know, why didn't we put them in every classroom? But it is a process to put air conditioning in our schools and in our classrooms. So this was just one project, the Highlands' Cafeteria. We had to resupport the cafeteria structure, so we ended up going in steel. We ended up having to cut the roof, as you see in the middle picture, and at the end, we have a curb ready for the equipment. We had to do, we have two units going in that one. And then the next space, we had to end up demoing the ceiling in the cafeteria, so we had to remove the ceiling, we had to put ductwork, we actually had to lower the ceiling, so that caused us problems. And at the end, we ended up putting a new ceiling grid, all that, and at the end, to the left was the old ceiling, and to the right, we have the new ceiling, which it has two-by-two LED, it's all up to date. The only thing we're waiting for is the equipment. The equipment didn't arrive on time, so it's supposed to be installed this weekend, and hopefully we'll have it done. The rest of the schools, all the elementary schools, first day of school, we had air conditioning, and including the high school B-Wing, which I had hoped that we had before summer school. I feel sorry for the summer school students, because, believe me, I was out in the school, and it was, I didn't want to be in school. But September, we had all the units going. The contractor did a great job. We got the units a week before school started. We had all the plumbing ready, and in that week, he worked double shifts to get the work done. And he really did a fantastic job. What we did was, and this is the last bit, was that all the, all the unit, all the units originally had, were in the classroom, so the compressor, the noise, the teachers used to complain to me all the time. So what we did was, all the compressors are outside, so if you see to the picture to the left, those are all the compressors, just like a split system in your home. That's 75 tons of, of refrigeration. We pipe it all through into the school to each of the units in the classroom. We had 25 classrooms that we did in B-Wing. So I think next year, summer students will still be happy. And that's the end of my report.
Again, just a, just a big thank you to Mr. Stefanelli and the Facilities and Operations team. Just a tremendous amount of work, and, you know, I joke with Frank because he comes with 27 slides, but that, that's indicative of the amount of work that he does. And quite frankly, since, since you're here, Frank, I'm gonna also tip my hat to you, because even during, you know, over the weekends or over the evenings, whatever the case may be, Frank is always in the job, he's always in the case, and thanks for that, Frank. We really appreciate it.
Frank, and I'd also would like to add thanks as well, because I, I use our facilities on the weekend, and there's never a moment when I see Frank and I can say, "Frank, that gate was unlocked," or, you know, "That grate is loose," or "Why wasn't the chain, why is the..." And he's right on it, to the point of, people have come to me and they have commented specifically how great our, our facilities look. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Just as a, as an update or a reminder to the Board, we will have the 2019, 2020 draft budget calendar for the Board's formal review and potential approval at our October meeting. It mirrors the work that we did last year. We are excited to be able to have the opportunity to come back out in October and again engage with, with our community in a, in sort of a public thinking session related to the construction of the upcoming budget. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of the conversations that we've had in the past in terms of budgetary planning, the more voices at the table, the better off it is for us as we, as we think, think about connections to our strategic plan, our long-range plan, and our vision to move forward. That said, strategic planning, and there are a number of people here this evening, and I, I want to thank you for, for being here, who participated in the strategic planning process over the course of the summer. Three full days of intense work, and, and I have to tell you, it was a, it was a product that I think everybody, I know everybody was, was very proud of at the end. We, we worked together, it was a consensus-driven model, and the Board has on the agenda this evening, the strategic plan for its formal approval, which the committee members know was a big part, a big step in the direction of making sure that we are gonna be working toward the goals identified in the plan. So, what I'd like to do is, I would like to welcome the members of our strategic... First of all, would you mind standing up so that we can recognize you formally? Thank you very much. And I'd like to, I'd like to welcome you to the podium, if, if you like, to sort of give us your, your take or your feeling on the process. I know it was a different process this year. It wasn't a process that you may have engaged in, in the past, in terms of developing the plan. It was, as I mentioned, a consensus-driven model process, which is a lot more focused and sort of moves you through the planning stages. So, I, I just would love to hear, or I know, I'm sure the Board would love to hear your, your thoughts on the process, now that I, you know, set it all up so you can't possibly accept anything negative about it. It's okay if nobody wants to. Please.
I'm Kathy Barpoulis, coordinator of math for K through 6. I have been involved in other strategic planning processes, and I have to say, this was one of the best strategic planning processes that I've experienced. As an administrator, first, I really appreciated having the opportunity to work alongside parents and to really hear their thoughts and their wishes and their dreams for their children. All of the conversations throughout the process were truly student-centered. We talked about what was, we thought was going to be best for our students. And all of the words, even as we took a look at we aspire to unlock the infinite and unique potential of each student every day, a lot went into trying to choose every word in that vision statement and what we aspire to. So I, in all, I really felt that it was a way that all, we all came together, and it was for the best of our students. The process was really amazing, because it was consensus-driven. I was really impressed with the way that all of us felt we really had an opportunity to participate in it, and that our ideas were heard. But I truly thank the parents. It was really a pleasure to work alongside them. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kathy. Oh, I thought you were going to the podium.
It was a really wonderful experience. I was one of five parents involved, and I think it impressed me the most, which is how devoted, you expect parents to be fully invested in the student's education, but to realize it's not just the parents, it's also the institution, from building administrators to the... to the head administrators, and it was really inspiring. And it's, you know, a lot of people say, what kids proud, what kids proud, and we should be, we have a lot to be proud of, we have a really great district.
Thank you. So with, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay. With the board's potential approval this evening, what we would like to do is, we would like to go through, again, a recommendation from the committee, go through the district, and update our mission placards that are posted everywhere with the new placard that it will include the vision, the mission, and our core beliefs, and that will be throughout the district, and again, help to remind everyone that everything we do, all of our focuses, all of our decisions, every decision that we make should be about moving our children forward and unlocking their unique abilities. So we're very proud of that, and hopefully the board approves it this evening. Again, our immediate priorities, providing access to rigorous curricular experience for all of our students, reducing chronic absenteeism where it may exist, and engaging and nurturing relationships with our families and our community members. You really can't find three more important goals, I don't think, into moving a school district and continuing to move a school district in the right direction. And we're very excited to continue that work together. Any questions on that? No, it is my, thank you very, very much for all of you coming out this evening that were on the planning process. Dr. Hand is going to provide us with a report on the, or the dual-language report on the COW study that was done, the report's last year.
So I'd like to begin by saying thank you to the Board of Education and to Dr. Ricka for supporting a comprehensive evaluation of our elementary dual-language program. This evening, I'm going to share an update to the evaluation process. Our dual-language program is currently in its 11th year. It started at George Washington School in the year 2007-2008 school year, and expanded two years later with a kindergarten cohort starting at Post Road. The past school year, the program expanded once again by adding a kindergarten cohort at Church Street School. Currently, Church Street School has a kindergarten and a first-grade cohort. As the program grows, a grade level each year. The original kindergarteners from George Washington School are now entering 11th grade at the high school. In the 2017-2018 school year, we partnered with the Center for Applied Linguistics to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of our K through five dual-language program. The purpose of the evaluation was to assess the alignment of our dual-language program with research and best practices, and to provide recommendations for strategic planning to adjust any program components for enhanced outcomes. Dr. Igoney Artigoacia, a research scientist and dual-language education specialist at COW, was the lead researcher for the evaluation. The program evaluation came at an opportune time, as we expand the program to a third elementary school and experience a growing interest and need for dual-language programs in our community. Data was collected via two-site visits, one in January and another one in March. One-hour interviews were held with the superintendent, assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, director of world languages, ENL and dual-language, ENL being English as a new language, and dual-language programs, elementary math and ELA coordinators, principals, assistant principals, and the dual-language instructional coach, as well as reading specialists. All had one-hour interviews. Focus groups included the K to two and three through five teachers at Post Road and George Washington Schools. In addition, focus groups were conducted at Post Road and George Washington for students in grades three through five. Two additional meetings were held with the kindergarten teachers at Church Street School and two middle-school teachers who currently serve dual-language students. Parent meetings were held at George Washington, Post Road, and Church Street Schools with approximately 12 to 20 participants at each, and an additional parent meeting was held in the evening and opened to any dual-language parent in the community. The evening meeting had over 30 parent participants. The evaluation also included 30-minute observations of each dual-language class, English and Spanish. At the time of the evaluation, there were 26 dual-language classes in all. Four of the classes were visited twice for a total of 30 observations of classroom teaching and learning. The classrooms that were visited twice either had a teacher that was absent, or children were doing independent reading at the time of the initial observation. In addition to interviews, focus groups, parent meetings, and observations, the study included a review and analysis of assessment data from the 2016-2017 school year, as well as a review and analysis of our program documents, including curriculum maps, reading level correlation charts, parent communication, PowerPoint presentations from meetings that we've had, anything that we could pull together to show documentation of our program. COW's guiding principles for dual-language education is a tool developed by researchers at the Center for Applied Linguistics to help dual-language programs with planning and ongoing implementation. The principles encompass seven strands, which include program structure, curriculum, instruction, assessment and accountability, staff quality and professional development, family and community, and support and resources. The dual-language guiding principles served as a framework for both the overall evaluation approach and the interview and observation protocols that were used during COW's site visits. The evaluation report was completed in June 2018. For each strand, the report includes research-based background information, the evaluation findings based on collected data, and recommendations for future attention. The report noted many promising practices that are in place, that we can build upon to strengthen and grow the program. The report concludes with a summary of recommendations organized into five overarching goals. The first summary recommendation is to develop a clearly articulated district-wide language allocation plan in grades K through five. The language allocation plan must outline instruction in Spanish for a minimum of 50% of the school day for all dual-language students across all grades K through five, and ensure that language arts instruction is consistently provided in both languages throughout the program. The second summary recommendation is to facilitate dual-language curriculum development to ensure that curriculum materials are available in both languages, and that Spanish teachers have the appropriate resources to implement the curriculum. The third summary recommendation is to develop an assessment plan to evaluate the linguistic goals set forth in the program that includes a scope and a sequence for English and Spanish language and literacy development with assessments in both language, and that would be by grade The fourth summary recommendation is to devise a comprehensive professional development plan that focuses on dual-language priorities. For teachers, suggested topics, and of course, many of these topics will come from our teachers. Topics for PD include, included, language and content integration, Spanish language and literacy for Spanish teachers, the development of metalinguistic awareness skills, and cultural proficiency. For leaders, a recommendation was given to create a professional learning community for our school and district administrators that would meet three to four times annually to discuss challenges and issues, share expertise, and strategize. For families and community, workshops and meetings focusing on cultural proficiency to build and deepen capacity and prepare them to serve as program advocates was another recommendation. The fifth summary recommendation was to develop a process for program evaluation, which obviously this program evaluation was part of, it's the beginning part of this process, and sustainability by engaging diverse shareholders in the decision-making. This would include reviewing the report with the superintendent, Board of Education, Director of World Languages, ENL and Dual Language Programs, K through 12, coordinators of ELA and Math, K through six, principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, and teachers. Collaboratively, we will prioritize action items by classifying them as immediate, this and the next school year, near future in two to three school years, and far future in five years. We will identify goals and desired outcomes for the selected strands for the upcoming year, and determine the key players, action items, timelines, and resources needed to attain each goal with identified and measurable outcomes to be used to monitor progress and evaluate goal attainment. And obviously, this will be in a written plan, an action plan that we will follow. Actualizing the plan, evaluating and repeating the process until all strands have been addressed, and then conducting another comprehensive program review would bring us through a full cycle of continuous improvement. So just to give the beginning pieces of what that plan would look like, a plan for the future, dual-language 2023, which is really, really scary when I wrote that, but I had to keep it, because when I wrote it, I was like, wow, five school years away, it's going to be 2023. Oh, my goodness.
Scary.
Our plan to accomplish this work includes summer work. In the summer of 2018, we shared, I shared the report when it came in with the superintendent, the Board of Education, and the Director of World Languages and L Programs, including dual-language. September 2018, we're at the Board of Education meeting, we're sharing the summary recommendations with building leaders, teachers, and parents after this meeting, and I'm really looking forward to that. We've been waiting for this meeting to be able to do that. In fall 2018, we plan to convene a committee analyzing the findings and the recommendations. We will be taking that report apart, word by word, page by page, and making sure that we make the right decisions for our program and our students. In winter of 2018, we will craft an action plan with immediate next school year, and I do want to say that some of the recommendations in this report, we're already acting on those recommendations, because we were already in the process of curriculum development and making, you know, making the program as strong as it could. I mean, that's what you do all the time, anyway. The near future, in two to three years, and the future plans for five years with goals and objectives. In the spring of 2019, we'll be back again to share that multi-year plan with the Board of Education and all the stakeholders, and in the spring and summer of 2019, we'll be establishing grade-level teams to work on curriculum, and that will be continuous throughout the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Hand.
It's just the beginning stages, but I just wanted to be able to have that opportunity to share that much.
And I wanted to say thank you, and I know the board, there may be questions, but I wanted to thank Dr. Hand, our colleagues that worked on this, and also the board. You know, I know for some time, the board had a desire to delve deep and to have a conversation related to this particular program. The great news is that the bright spots that were identified by the researchers are bright spots that continue, I think, to drive a program that's very desirable. And the areas that we know that we need to strengthen are areas that I think that many of us intuitively recognize that those were areas that we needed to focus on. So, you know, the long and the short of it is, we were able to identify or now have concrete plans that were brought together in a scientifically, you know, research model, right? The process is quite amazing. And looking forward, I think the program is just going to become all that much stronger. So, thanks again, Dr. Hand, and thanks to the board as well for your support in allowing us to enlist COW in this process.
And I also wanted to say, the program, as Dr. Ricka said, the program evaluation was truly a collaborative effort, and we appreciate all of our administrators, teachers, parents, and students who participated in and supported this comprehensive program evaluation. It really was an amazing process to go through, very condensed, but very intense at the same time. We are looking forward to the work ahead to enhance and grow our program. So I just want everybody in this room that was very helpful, Lisa Panaro, who is our Director of World Languages and ENL and Dual Language Programs, thank you so much for, you know, being by my side through this whole process. And I also want to welcome Yolanda Rodriguez, who is our instructional coach. She's going to be new this year, and a lot of this work, she'll be supporting with us, especially the professional development with the teachers, and I'm really looking forward to it. I was already in my office looking up so many things that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess, just some comments. This is really the first time we've done a program review on an academic program, and I hope this is something that is used as a good model moving forward. I think, you said it, this started well before you, you got here, Dr. Hand, but we're looking at year 12 with dual-language, and that's quite a bit of time for us to run a program and not have a time to reflect on it and review it and see how we're doing. And I think as we were given the report this summer, there were some serious shortcomings that we saw in the report that you have acknowledged, and I know that you're working on, and I know there were some promises made to parents that put their children into dual-language, that their kids would be biliterate and bicultural. And it'd be interesting to see what the final outcome is in evaluating how those students came out of the system after 12 years, what our attrition rate looks like, you know, again, just give us an understanding of the data to see how our programs look. You know, it's, we've had some really dedicated teachers, and I think historically, we've seen some really dedicated teachers, seen the inconsistencies, and unfortunately have decided to go into other programs because of some of the inconsistencies, and I hope this is a great time for us to reinvigorate those folks and come back. We've dedicated an enormous amount of resources as a district. We send our teachers to conferences every year at considerable expense to the taxpayer and to the district because of our dedication to this program. And I think we really have expectations, had expectations that we meet those, that we meet those expectations. You mentioned we have a dedicated dual-language coach, and I think that's important as well, and that speaks to the board and the community's commitment to this program, and I hope we're able to keep our coach and use her abilities to the best interest of our students, because this is too important, and again...
No pressure, Yolanda.
Ms. Rodriguez, you're fantastic. We had you twice. So as a parent, I've got 13 academic years in the dual-language program, and it was pretty obvious as a parent that there were some shortcomings, and unfortunately, I think many times, the parents' comments were ignored. So it's, not that we're happy, that you're happy to see something like this, but it's happy to, you know, it's a good process to go through to understand that there are shortcomings, and it's okay to have shortcomings, but we need to do better, and I think that's what you're here for. And again, like I said, it started well before you got here, and I have the fullest confidence that as you work through this program, it's going to be pointed in the right direction for years and years to come. So thank you for working on that.
I'd like to put a little bit of a positive spin on it. I was lucky enough to grow up in a dual-language program. Entonces es muy importante hablar más que un idioma. But I think that we, we have growing pains, as every program, new program will, but when we've heard some of our children present at meetings, and I can listen to a seven-year-old or an eight-year-old Latino or Latina girl talk to somebody who grew up just speaking English, having them both speak to one another and understand one another, and eventually, by the time they're in sixth grade or seventh grade, speak without accent in either language, it's incredible, both for what they can learn, and what hopefully culturally it will mean to all of us in terms of a level of understanding that the children have for one another socially and culturally. So I'm really up on the program. I think mine was kind of a program, because there was a Cuban girl in my class, and her mom volunteered a lifetime ago to teach us all Spanish, so it wasn't organized, but it worked. But this, we have the ability to do better, and I think that we've had a good start, and I think we need to move forward on the positive with this, and, you know, learn from the mistakes, but not focus so much on those at this point if we want to move forward.
And if I can just say, in a broader context, that the board and the administrators here are committed to assessing our programs and to continued improvement, and so we're going to be looking at other programs, we're going to be assessing, and that's something we are committed to.
Absolutely. And with that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hand.
Thank you, Dr. Hand.
Before I do the coming, I do, I have to recognize our Marines are here this evening. Thank you very much for being here with us, and also thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. Mr. Eden thought they were coming to take him away. No, it's okay. Coming soon, tomorrow, and you know, the weather tomorrow is going to, it looks like it's going to be a little bit dicey, but that is not going to dampen the spirit for, and I should say, it's a national program, right? It's a county program, Dads Take Your Child at School Day, but we also, we're very clear, and we wanted to make sure we extend it to anybody who has a positive connection with any of our children. So whether it's a dad, or a mom, or grandma, or grandpa, we are significant, we definitely are excited to welcome them to our schools tomorrow, rain or shine. Certainly, the holiday coming up on Wednesday for those celebrating, your thoughts, and we have special coffee and conversation coming up next week, where my guest will actually be Colleen Wilson from the Journal News, our journalist, our education journalist, and she's going to come and talk a little bit about what she does, but also talk to our community and ask you what kind of stories you'd like to see them cover this year. Of course, every story should be about white plains. Principal Doherty, no doubt about it. We are awaiting the three-to-eight assessment data release that is presently still in
We are awaiting the three to eight assessment data release, it is presently still embargoed, we're hoping that with the primary out of the way now, that we'll get that information soon. We also are going to be bringing forward our 18, 19 district goals and objectives, as well as I mentioned earlier, our budget input sessions coming up, and we are going to have our grade four students participating in the NAEP testing in January and in the spring. And that, and the president, is the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All good, all good, okay.
Oh, yes.
Is it all right if I stay here and just kind of shout at you guys?
Sure.
So, there's going to be like a county-wide school spirit vote, and the polls open for that tomorrow, and they go on until October something.
County-wide school spirit vote.
Okay.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
It is for...
The top 12 in the county with the most school spirit, the high school and MAS are in the top 12. That's awesome, that's awesome, so go ahead, Jackson, tell us.
Tiger pride.
Please vote for any White Plains school, the high school specifically.
The high school specifically, because we are going to win.
So we can go in?
We can go in.
Yes, yes, everything's online, it's on Facebook page, you can get it. Based on school spirit.
How did we get to be one of the 12?
By getting votes.
Votes.
Okay.
So also, on Friday, we're doing Peace One Day.
This is from this coming Friday?
This coming Friday, so it's just at White Plains High School.
Peace One Day.
Oh.
So, um...
I'm going to be away.
So basically, if you don't know, Peace One Day, it's an annual day to promote global unity and intercultural cooperation, so yeah, and basically, it's to raise awareness against global violence. So it's also a great way to show school spirit, and please vote tomorrow and after that.
Thanks, Jackson.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we're going to move to summary action items. Before we do that, for our summary action items, may I have a motion for an addenda to the agenda for topics 18 through 21? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now, we have 21 summary action items, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I would like to recognize the following donations, 3,000, 3,000 science books by Dina Mochet.
Dinah Mochet.
Dinah Mochet, from the Schwartz family, elementary students, it's amazing, we're so grateful for that. $5,000 from the Kurtz Family Fund for the Margaret L. Kurtz Memorial Scholarship, $1,500 from the Lion Electric Company, and $1,500 from National Express for district programs. We're very thankful and grateful for their support. And golf balls from Mr. Grobe for the high school golf team. Mr. Grobe has since moved to Florida, so we thank him very much for all of the golf balls that we've received over the years, but he, and he's a fantastic, he's a lifelong tiger, also went to Princeton, so he's a tiger twice, but thanks so much, Mr. Grobe, and all.
Excuse me, Joe, can I just comment on the 3,000 science books? So Dinah Mochet, I mean, talking about the Hall of Fame and the new inductees, Dinah Mochet was an inductee in the Hall of Fame, and she was somebody, she passed away in May, and she was somebody who really gave back to the community. I remember when my daughter was in kindergarten at Post Road School, I brought her in, she spoke to the kids, she gave them all books, she used to participate in Author-Illustrator Night at Post Road, and her four grandchildren, three have graduated from White Plains High School, and there's one there now, so I just wanted to note that.
Yeah, it's amazing, we were looking at some of the books, and I think many of us have read her books growing up, and you didn't even realize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, under other actions, we have an addenda to the agenda for item 13, may I have a motion that this be added?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, we'll proceed, so, you want to start with that? No, it's up to you, do you want to start with that, or me? Both of us say that for the end? Okay. Okay, all right, okay, okay. Next, we have the recommended approval of the strategic plan, and that was the plan that was just presented, many of the members of the strategic planning team are here, so may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Just thank you to those who put in all those hours, and I think that gives us great direction for the district for our year, it's a great work plan.
Yeah, I also just want to add, I appreciate the time that I did get to spend with you all, I feel like, you know, we've kind of connected on another level, so I do appreciate it, although I couldn't do the full three days, I think I did almost two, or one and a half, close to two, but I do appreciate, I do appreciate being able to sit and just hear you all brainstorm, so thank you.
And I think we all appreciate also how seamlessly it seems that what was done this time around connects so well with what was done, you know, 10, 11, 12 years ago, so thank you.
Yeah, the conversation was so robust, and the thought over every single word was just so insightful, so really motivating, and we can't thank you enough, I don't think words can say it, but know that we are very thankful to have such a great bunch of active people on our strategic planning committee.
And the importance is that people from diverse backgrounds all have the same basic goal, which is our students are most important natural resource, and we're able to come to consensus, which is not something that's easy to do in our natural world, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the treasurer's report for June 2018. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Any questions?
Do you have enough money in?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the replenishment of fund balance reserves as of June 30, 2018, and this is to help with our tax surcharge payments, correct? Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
We discussed this at the audit committee meeting, and it was part of the year end as well, so this is, again, all part of making sure we have those reserves for tax challenges.
Tax, yeah, yeah, and it's really great, you know, as evidenced by our words, that we can't have reserves like this to offset those things, so thank you again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the fund balance reserves report as of June 30, 2018. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended authorization to appropriate the tax surcharge reserve to increase the 2018, 2019 budget in the amount of $690,045 and 15 cents in order to fund taxes for our backup. May I have, now, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Just, this is really what we've just done, we've put the money away, so that when we have settlements such as ones like this, we're able to take the money out of the account, out of that savings account, and we don't have to go back to the taxpayer, so I think it's a really good job that Ann has done, and the district has done, and making sure that's taken care of.
Such important planning.
Very responsible.
Yeah, yeah, very responsible planning. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of proposed installation of a distributed etna system at White Plains High School, a secret type two action. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Can we, do we have any detail on that? Just a little?
Sure.
Yeah, just a brief one of this.
It's going to be your rank, either one of us, but it...
It's going to give you your coverage.
It's an antenna system.
Oh, great, okay.
That Verizon Wireless.
So, as you know, that at Highlands, we put a DAS system up two years ago, and was fully funded by Verizon, so Verizon came back for coverage for the high school, they're willing to put in a complete system in the high school to cover all of cell phones, and it won't free of charge.
The magic, that's it.
But we have to have them go through the permit process with the state.
Absolutely.
And this helps us with safety and security as well.
Yes, yes.
So let's think about how this...
Well, that's probably, that's what it started with, because at Highlands, we had no coverage, and in case we had an incident, we couldn't get homes all out.
It's a stone building, right?
Yes, I remember, yes.
So the first resolution is just to declare for environmental purposes the type two action, and the second...
And the second, yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended authorization for the president of the Board of Education to execute the in-building radio distributed etna system with New York SMSA Limited Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, as per our attachment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any more questions?
Can you say it again?
Thanks.
All those in favor? Aye. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the audit committee minutes of the August 29, 2018 meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
Do we want to do that? Do we do that for our minutes?
Yeah, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the revisions to the audit committee charter as per our attachment.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Just the high point on that, Ann, was we, with the volunteer, the community volunteers, correct?
I was trying to clarify the number of participants by the Board of Education, which is making consistent wording.
Right. Right, so consistency with our community volunteers and the number of volunteers.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, under bids and RFPs, the recommended approval to participate in cooperative competitive bidding with Eastern Suffolk Bosse's and Nassau Bosse's, and authorization for Assistant Superintendent of Business to take the necessary or appropriate actions to further the purpose of this resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Just a few things, right? It was just a couple of items.
Joint bidding.
Yeah, with Bosse's.
Right.
Yeah, Bosse's.
This saves you time and money for advertising and having to go out and bid for it separately. Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended adoption of new policies, our student wellness policy, budget transfers policy, investments policy, purchasing policy, purchasing authority policy, contracting for professional service policy, expense reimbursement policy, and meals and refreshment policies. We had the first reading of these policies at our last, announced at our last meeting, the policy committee met, we went over these and made edits as appropriate, and now, all those edits are now contained in these new policies with new numbering, and so now, we are submitting them for approval. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's a great thing. The recommended approval of a resolution in connection with particular legal proceedings. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll move to board discussion. No, oh, no, no, sorry, sorry.
That's perfect.
Sorry about that.
That would have been something. Well, do we have board discussion now? No, 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 no. Oh, we have our 13th item, that number 13.
Lucky 13.
The 13th item. We have the recommended approval of the appointment of Michael Eaton replacing Chad Gleason as middle school assistant principal. Yes, the tenured areas middle school assistant principal, the current assignment will be assistant principal of the middle school Highlands campus. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Eaton, and of course, Principal Spatafor is here this evening, I'd just like to thank Principal Spatafor as well, and the committee, everyone that worked hard, Mr. Pepper and the Resources Department during the search process, it was a, there was a very large and talented pool of folks who applied for the position, diverse in every way, and congratulations to Mr. Eaton for shining through, and we know that you're going to do an outstanding job, and we also know that everything you do and everything you think about has to do with our kids. I mean, you're a lifelong tiger yourself, which is fantastic to see you moving up into this position where you're going to be able to continue to lead our children and make a positive impact, so congratulations, thank you very much, Mrs. Spatafor, and thank you, Mr. Pepper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said before, Dad's proud.
So now, we'll move to board committee reports. The only item that I, we've only met for HR, and we know that all of our recruiting is on target, we've seen the schedule to recruit for our position in HR and Eastview, so we know that's on target. Are there any other board committee reports?
Audit committee.
Audit committee, yeah, and we've seen the...
We just approved, those reports were, we went through.
We did the early report of the year-end audit, and that will become at the next meeting.
And the curriculum committee also met, and we started reviewing the dual language assessment report, and we will continue looking at that through the course of the year. And we started again very preliminarily looking at some physics enhancements at the high school, so that's also to be continued.
Okay, so before I make a motion to adjourn into exec session to discuss personnel matters, I want to thank both Johns, John Shepherd and John Missavage, for starting us off for another year televising our board meeting, and a welcome to our Marines. Our Marines, we thank you and recognize your service, again, as Dr. Ricker said, thank you for joining us, thank you to everyone who made presentations, who came out, the strategic planning, our PTAs from various schools, just thank you, everyone, for all you do. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn into exec session to discuss personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.